Good evening. Welcome to the November 20th, 2023 Regular Session Board meeting. Before we scan to the pledge, I'd like us to continue to stand afterwards to give a moment of silence for the three Tuskegee High School students and their three parent volunteers who died last Tuesday en route to Ohio School Board Association's Capitol Conference. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we come now to the superintendent's report.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
You'd think by now I would have a swing of things.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes, here.
Mr. Ratwa?
Here.
Mr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
This is McKay.
Here. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, and to all the Marion City School Board members. We are going to start off our evening tonight with some recognition of student achievement, so I've asked our athletic director, Shawn Kearns, to come. He's first going to recognize our first team Mid-Ohio Athletic Conference students, and Ms. McKay has the certificate. So, Mr. Kearns, do you want to come up?
Sure. We've got six, might have a couple others come in here, we'll see what happens when we get started, but we had nine individuals this year that were named First Team Mid-Ohio Athletic Conference for the fall athletic season, and we have placed them here right now. I'll start here on the left, this is sophomore Gabby Maltz, she is a soccer player at Marion Harding.
Hey, Shawn, can you grab the mic so people at home would be able to hear?
Oh.
Yep, thank you.
Gabby was a soccer player this year for us. She was near the top of the league in goals scored. She's the, gosh, I'm trying to think, we haven't had very many sophomores get First Team All-Conference in soccer, so quite an accomplishment for Gabby, great job. Next up is Lydia Price. Lydia is a sophomore also, cross-country runner, also plays soccer here, she earned First Team in cross-country. She was hurt for probably a little more than half the season this fall. When she did come back, she came back fantastic. She was able to catch up and finish second to her sister that we're going to talk to here in a minute, talk about here in a minute, in the conference race. She ended up running, I believe, in 1918 at the conference race. She ran in 1912 at districts to qualify for regional. Just to give you an idea, our school record for girls' cross-country is 1909. So she is right there on the cusp, as is her sister, who we'll talk about here in a minute. So, great job, Lydia. Next, we have Leah Price. Leah, at the conference meet, won the meet with a 1917 time. She was therefore the MOAC Runner of the Year in cross-country. She then went on to qualify for regionals, and then at regionals, ran a 1911 at regional. So she was two seconds off the school record. So these two are now number two and number three in school history on the cross-country board at Marion Harding, and they're both only sophomores. So fantastic. Next up is Justin Long, football player at Marion Harding. He actually was an All-State football player last year, honorable mention, we haven't heard about that for this year yet. He was First Team All-Conference this year, was up at the top of the league in tackles, tackles for loss, he was everywhere on the football field this fall for us. And swimming this winter, right? Yeah, it's exciting. So, great job, Justin, great season. Next up is Cade Sutherland. Cade is, this is his second time, did you come to the board meeting last year too? Second year, second time at a board meeting. First team MOAC in cross-country for the second straight year. He finished number two in the conference meet for the boys. His teammate Carter is not here, at least not yet. He was number one, so he went 1-2 in the girls, we went 1-2 in the boys as well. Cade ran a 16, what was your best this year, 1612? 1615 was your best time this year? So he's going to be also in the top five on the boys' board for all-time cross-country times at Marion Harding. So, great season, great career, Cade, Cade's a senior. Next up is Reyna Smith. She's a tennis player here for Marion Harding. Reyna went undefeated in conference play, is that right? In the MOAC this year at second singles, she won the tournament, which gave her First Team MOAC honors. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you were 21-5 on the season? You were. You were 21-5 on the season this year at both first and second singles, and I think you even played, you played a match or two at doubles? Yep, just for the fun of it. She is only a junior, so she'll be back again next year to play more tennis, and she's playing basketball this winter and loving it. Great job, Marion. Quickly mention a couple others that didn't make it tonight. Like I said, Carter Ferguson in cross-country for his first at the conference meet, was the Runner of the Year for the boys. Remus, Rema Smith, no relation, was a golfer, girls' golfer for us, a senior. She is the first girl to ever earn conference, First Team All-Conference honors at Marion Harding. We've had some fantastic girls' golfers in the past, but they didn't have the opportunity to earn All-League honors because there wasn't, you know, league girls' golf in the old Buckeye Conference, or the OHC, or the GBC, or that kind of thing. So, a great accomplishment for Rema as well. And then Mike Williams, also not here tonight, I think he's on his way, because he did reach out to me a couple times, but if he does come in, we'll recognize him. He was a menace on the football field this year, 13 sacks all over the place, played a little bit of offense too, blocked a punt for a touchdown, and was our team MVP. So hopefully those guys will pop in here in a minute. Thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause. And next, we're gonna, yeah, you guys are good, thank you so much. We know it's not easy to achieve these accomplishments, so we're extremely proud that you are Marion students. Next up, we're going to, this is extremely exciting for me as a superintendent, because we now have a girls' wrestling team, which makes me very happy. So we are now going to recognize those students and their coaches, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kearns to give a little bit of information, and girls, if you want to come on up.
All right, I'll just, I'll say a few words, and I'll turn it over to the coaches, but we're extremely excited. Actually, Sophie Holt, would you raise your hand? Sophie actually wrestled with the boys mostly last year. You got a little black eye going on there. She wrestled mostly with the boys last year in a few girls' tournaments. So she was really the first first girl wrestler, as far as one that got to participate in girls' tournaments last year. And we knew we had interest, but the opportunity to know that you're going to go out and wrestle in girls' tournaments against other girls, on a level playing field, and that opportunity has been growing around the state and around the nation, for that matter, this is fantastic. I'm just super excited to see all you guys up here, but I'm going to let the coaches introduce them and say a little bit more.
I'm Andrew Sieroski, I'm going to be the head coach this year. I went to Baldwin Wallace, I wrestled, I played football, I coached four years at Highland, coached with Trent Ramsey, my assistant coach this year. We've kind of switched roles, I am now the head coach, he is the assistant, he was the head coach last year at Grant. As you can see, we've got quite the few girls up here, and there are even some that aren't even here. But this is something that's been a long time coming. These girls have the opportunity that a lot of people don't have in life, let alone in high school, and that's just to be a trailblazer. Be the person to set the culture, lead the way, be the first to do something. These ladies have a very good opportunity to do that, and honestly, if it weren't for probably, you know, Sophie and some other adult creative idea makers, this wouldn't have ever happened. So I really want to thank Sophie for advocating, and Coach Ramsey for advocating and getting all these girls to come out. Wrestling is something that, once you've wrestled, everything else in life becomes easier. These girls have the opportunity of a lifetime to create something of their own and be proud of it, as well as learn things that will go way past high school and wrestling. If you want to introduce them, Coach Ramsey is going to do that, he's really good with language, stuff like that, I'm just a math guy.
All right, first, we have sophomore Haley Blevins. We have freshman Cheyenne Lane. We have eighth grader, so we are actually incorporating the middle school as well in everything that we're doing as well. So we have eighth grader Graceland Criswell. We have freshman Haley Manley. Freshman Christina Saylor. We're adding, like, as we go here, so there's a couple they weren't even ready for. We have sophomore Ashlyn Wilson. We have junior Emily Weiss. Freshman Chanel Kellogg. Another eighth grader, Una Inez. Seventh grader, sorry, seventh, seventh, got a long time with her. Got freshman Michaela Thorpe. Sophomore Haley Kaler. Sophomore Ashlyn Summers. And then, as we talked about earlier, we have sophomore Sophia Holt. So we'll give it up for our girls wrestlers here.
So with girls wrestling being so new to the sport, this schedule is yet to be finished. These are just the ones we have set in stone. All of them are away, although we would be looking forward to, you know, maybe hosting our own girls' tournament. December 17th is our first tournament, we'll be at Clyde. On the 21st and 22nd, which is the following Friday and Saturday, we will be at Finley. January 14th, we'll be at Mechanicsburg. I do know for a fact that that will also be a middle school tournament. That'll be a Sunday, and then on that Saturday, following Saturday, we'll have a Fremont-Ross tournament on the 20th. That is also, I believe, a middle school tournament. The 26th, Belle Fountain Tournament, I think that's a Friday-Saturday tournament, I think that that is also a middle school tournament. And then we finish off the year with Toledo Start Tournament on a Friday, as well as a Saturday tournament at Rossford on February 10th. The Toledo Start one being on February 3rd, however, I think that's wrong, I think it's the second. The sectional, regional tournament will be in March, first weekend of March, and then the following weekend will be the state tournament. So hopefully, these girls have something that they can look forward to, and if they don't make their dreams come true this year, hopefully they realize what it takes, what it's going to take to get there. So if we could just give a big round, a huge round of applause for all these ladies.
And we look forward to seeing what you girls are going to do this season. And you all do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting, so please feel free to go if you need to. Thank you for coming out, parents, and supporting our students. So I'm going to ask Greg Menzy to make his way up. This happens every year when we provide our beginning-of-the-year data update, so Greg is going to run through some of our current beginning-of-the-year academic data, our attendance data, our discipline data. This is really going to be, again, it's our starting point every year, so we know where students are coming in. And then I also wanted to just refresh everyone's memory about the goals that we're working on. We're working on closing that gap, closing that gap with our English Language Arts performance. We're also looking at closing that gap on our state testing with math performance. We're also looking at decreasing the number of days students do not have access to instruction, and we're looking at both in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, as well as just those other reasons why students are absent from school, and really paying attention to those numbers. So you're going to see the way that we're reporting data and looking at data is going to be a little bit different this year. And last but not least, our goal for is focusing on our whole child and our whole educator with a focus on that healthy tenant. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg to provide an update.
Okay, I'm going to go through just some of the very high district-level data. Now, something to think about when looking at this data, all the buildings have drilled down data, we look at it at the district level as well, but all the buildings have drilled down data, all the teachers, so all that, this isn't the only data point for each one of these things I'm going to talk about. So for enrollment, you can see there, this date, or this set of data came from November 6th, and we're at 4,035 students in K to 12. Okay, that's about 81 over where we were last year at the same point. And then open enrollment out, we're at 845 at this time, and open enrollment in, we are at 298. So OE out, it's about the same, and OE in, we are about 30 less than where we were at this point, at the end of the year last year. Then we have attendance data, so the two points I have up there are from the local report card that was released, and then our quarter-one data. So what we are looking at here is, just like Olympia said, it's very important for our kids to be at school, to receive the instruction that they need, and so we are making sure that we are monitoring the attendance rate of each one of the schools. And the buildings have, most of the buildings have building goals for their attendance and are looking at different ways, looking at kids who are working towards that chronic absenteeism and that kind of stuff, to make sure our kids are at school. And then we come to our value-added, this gets released each year, so you can just go to the next slide. So what value-added is, it's comparing how our students have grown on the state assessments compared to all the other students in the same situation throughout the state. We do get district, or we do get teacher data, so here you can see last year's teacher data compared to this year's. So light blue and green are at or above the expected growth, and those who are in the yellow, the data shows that their students were below the expected growth. So here, what this one shows is each one of the tested areas, how each one of the tested areas worked out in the growth measure. So again, the yellow is below, and then green and blue is above, and well, and highly likely that it is above in the blue. The line down the middle is zero, that would mean the exact growth. So you can see where the dots are for each one, and the way the schools work, look at these, a lot of times they look at a cohort, so where they were from fourth grade to where they now, and then where they were in fifth grade, so it's not just comparing apples to apples with some of them, it's apples to oranges, because you have different cohorts, so on and so forth. But the buildings all have their own individual data for this as well, and the teachers do. So we have, and we have that for both ELA and math, so that's the math one. And it goes for all, fourth through eighth, and then algebra and geometry at the high school level. Go ahead. So then we get to our beginning-of-the-year diagnostic data. So in the elementary and the middle school, we use IREDDI, so the diagnostic achievement levels, we continue to track these throughout the year, and we give these three times a year, at the beginning, the middle, and end of the year. So we will look at the achievement levels at each one of the different administrative, administration windows, and then track the growth of the students as well. Because even if they are below grade level, or in the yellow or red, that's the different below-grade levels, they still have growth goals that we would like them to meet, and in IREDDI, they have typical growth and stretch growth. So we like to see how they compare in the growth compared to other students who started at the same levels. So that's reading, and it's the same thing for math, the same, or the same, oh, go back to reading for a second, sorry about that. Just push. So, high school uses NWEA MAP, so for this one, that's just the percentile, but like I said at the beginning, just know that each one of these drills down into the different areas. So for reading, it breaks it down to comprehension, vocabulary, all of those, this is just the overall achievement level. And then map growth is the same thing. So for math, IREDDI diagnostic for K through eight, and the different piece here is, at the high school level, in the math department, they use a program called ALX, and what that one looks at is the percentage of the material that a student knows, and that's the percentage of the pie that they have. And the buildings use that data, the teams use that data, our teachers use that data to gear their tier-one instruction, but also to make groups for their tier-two instruction, and the teachers really drill down into the fine, nitty-gritty data. It's not just the high-level stuff. They use the programs, they use their knowledge of the curriculum in order to drill down and offer the best instruction that they can for our students. Then we come to discipline. So like was mentioned at the beginning, we're looking at the in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, emergency removals, which are essentially out-of-school suspensions, and how much instruction our students are missing due to these disciplinary actions. So here you can see the different levels of in-school suspension, and the number of students who have amassed those days. So like at the middle school, there's 146 ALC disciplinary actions, but that was for 100 students, okay? And something to point out here, the percentage of students who have these disciplinary actions for in-school suspension, since it's only at the middle school and high school level, it's 7.7% of the students at that level who have received in-school suspension. And then for 470 days. Out-of-school suspension, we're at 524 days throughout, and again, you can see it's the same breakdown, where it's 5.6% of our students who have received an out-of-school suspension, and this is quarter-one data, so through October 2019. And then emergency removals, we're at 51.47 days, and again, 0.8% of our students who have received that disciplinary action. And then the next slide shows you the total days. So through quarter-one, we are at 1,045.47 missed school days, basically missed instructional days due to disciplinary action. And the next slide shows that we have eight expulsions through quarter-one, and an expulsion is anything that's over 10 days, that gets coded as an expulsion. And there is a process for all of that as well.
So I also thought it would be important to, yeah, the next slide, just share with you, because I know we've been talking about how we were revamping our DLT, our BLT, our TBT, so when Greg talks about drilling down, I wanted to show you a few examples of what we're doing this year. So this is what, this is an example of what IREDDI data looks like. So, you know, you guys have seen numbers when we look at the high-level district data, but our teams and our teacher teams and our building-level teams can drill down and say, you know, "Oh, look down at the bottom of that top chart, it's about comprehension." So we can look at comprehension overall, but then we can also look a little deeper and say, "Literature comprehension versus informational text." And this is mostly true in a lot of schools, that our students struggle more with informational text. And then down at the bottom is an example of math, how we can look at, you know, is our focus on number and operations, is our focus on algebra and algebraic thinking? So this is just an example, I have a few screenshots of how we're breaking down the data to actually try to get down to the root causes. Next slide, this is another new way that we're looking at data, thanks to Greg helping us look at some different ways, but we can break it down by school, of how many out-of-school suspensions, how many emergency removals we have, how many in-school suspensions, which is ALC. But we also, at the chart to the left, which is all zeros, because I'm just using it as an example to show you, but we can also look at students, when Greg said, "We have 100 students at Grant who've received ALC," we can look at those students and say, "How many of those 100 students actually had more than 10 incidents?" Or, "How many of them only had one or two?" So those students who have only been in in-school suspension one or two times, they're probably less, you know, of a risk for us to, you know, we need to do some touch-ins and check-ins to teach them, but we really need to be looking at those students that might show up on that chart that have more than 10 incidents. Next slide. This is another way we're looking at data through Edge and Climber. This is actually the responses, so if you look to the left, these are the district responses through Edge and Climber. Most of them have been a conference with the student. The next one is loss of privilege, but we're really trying to track what we're doing, parent guardian contacts, restorative conferences, timeouts. So we don't want to just look at the discipline incident that's occurring, whether it was, you know, a fight or insubordination. We really want to look at what's happening, what are we doing as adults to address those? So we are really trying to look at tracking that a little bit this year and having those conversations at the building and district level. And the next one, Greg, again, we've been working, Greg, with spreadsheets this year, but we figured out, there's so many hours that our students attend school a year, and they're allowed to miss, how many hours? Or percentage?
It's 10%, 10%.
So we already have 105 students who've missed more than the allowed hours for the year. So again, some of these are things that we might be able to help, some things are, you know, challenges that we have, but again, we have basically tiered our students, and every school has this with their students only, this is, you know, so we can look at those students, how many students are not really a risk right now for attendance, but we can constantly try to keep an eye on them and try to be more preventative and proactive than waiting until those students fall down into that they've already missed their allowable Last but not least, you know, our main focus is to make sure that we are graduating students, and we're graduating them prepared for career, college, or military. So on our report card, you will see a four-year graduation rate, and you will see a five-year graduation rate. We really focus on We really focus on the four-year because that means that these students have graduated in four years with their cohort. When you see the five-year graduation rate, those are students who maybe had to go to summer school or they had to go an extra year because they didn't meet their required credit hours. So this is really our focus because we want our students to graduate within four years. So based on our LRC, our class of 2023, our graduation rate was 84.4%. And on the left side, you will see those groups that have done better than that. So when we look at males and females, our female students are graduating at a higher rate than our male students. When we look at our students broken down by race, we have some gaps. Our black, non-Hispanic students are only graduating at a 73.1%. That's a more than a 10% gap than where they should be. So these are things that we need to look at. Our Hispanic students are graduating at a 76.9%. Our multiracial students, 80.8% lower than all students. And we want them to at least be at the rate with all students. When we look at our English learners, 57.1%. There's an even bigger gap when we look at our English learners. So that tells us we have to do something better for our English learner students. Our students with disabilities are at a lower graduation rate. Our homeless students are doing a little bit better. Not by much, but they're doing better than our average. And then foster students are below too. And then the slide to the right is really just to show you a different graphic, the bars and everything. And again, we will share this data with you in the update this week so that you have it. But I really wanted you to understand and to infer, to see, this is like our beginning of the year. It's our, it's our baseline. And we will continue to monitor this, we'll continue to do check-ins. Our next testing window is in January. So we will plan to do our middle-of-the-year update in February. But these are the basis of the conversations that are happening for the district leadership team, our building leadership teams, and our teacher-based teams on a daily basis. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Greg.
So I thought we were looking at, when we talk about removals and so on and so forth, but I thought we were looking at time spent out of the classroom in increments of like minutes or whatever. So let's say Olympia Della Flora is removed from the classroom for 60 minutes or whatever. That doesn't constitute like a whole day. But here it's charted as that person being removed, which if we look at it in increments of time as opposed to like full days, would that make a difference on the data?
This data that's reported here are students who've been out for full days.
Right. I thought we were going to look-
But we could, we could look at students, I mean, if they're only assigned for partial of the day. But part of what we're trying to also say is, does a student need to be out for the entire day?
Right.
Or is it just one period? Like, I may have an issue in Ms. McKay's class, but I don't have an issue with my other five teachers. So again, it's looking at, should we, because now that student is going to be behind in six classes versus can we just assign them during that period?
Yeah, that's what I worry about.
And in that data, the emergency removal is where you're going to see more of the fractions of a day. And that's why that one was like, whatever, 0.47. But it, it does depend on how it's put in for the discipline log entry. And, and that's something that we're working really hard with our EMIS department and the secretaries on making sure it is, it is very accurate in, in the duration of the disciplinary action.
And, and the time is extremely important for us for the incidents. There's, there's one that I didn't show you, but maybe I'll incorporate that into the middle of the year where we can chart, you know, let's say there's 10 disciplinary incidents a day. We can chart it and see, well, what time did it occur? And I would say probably across all of our schools right now, it's the middle of the day, which is where lunch and recess is. So it shouldn't be really a surprise. But again, we're trying to still tweak that dashboard of how it pulls data. But I think it's going to be able to give us valuable information as we're trying to change some of the behaviors that we're seeing.
Right, especially upon removal or expulsions or suspension. We, I thought we had talked about as well, well, what do you do with, you know, Kevin, who's been out, you know, for suspension for three days? Does he just walk back in willy-nilly into the classroom? How are we helping, you know, those particular students to, as far as instruction is concerned? That's what I'm concerned about. It's like those, those students that are reflected up there, what happens with their instructional time? Do they get works at home? I know I'd also talked to Dr. Bolden at the high school, I think, that has a plan for that. So just want to know.
Yeah, well, it used to be that we were not required to provide work for them and work for students if they're suspended. But now we have to provide work for them. It's not an option, so.
Okay.
That should be happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll go on to item four, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Kevin?
Madam President and the rest of our board members, I get the honor tonight to present to you our new math curriculum, Bridges Into Math. Bridges Into Math is an inquiry-based, student-centered program. Bridges focuses on developing mathematical reasoning with our students. So tonight, what I'm going to do is we did a soft start with our math program, meaning that next school year will be full implementation across our district. This year, what we did is we focused on Number Corner, one portion of it, across all of our buildings. We have new this year math coaches in each of our elementary schools, which our math coaches was really big on supporting that implementation and being there as a instructional support during the Number Corner. This year, so all of our buildings are doing Number Corner. This year, we took 12 of our classrooms and we did early implemented Bridges Math. So two classrooms per building and a sample of each of our grade level across the district implemented our math program. So we were able to see what was going on at each grade level. 23, 24, this school year, we also, several intervention specialists also implementing a portion or a component called Bridges Intervention, which is a targeted instruction for our K-5 math program. Again, as I mentioned to you, next school year, all classrooms will implement Bridges curriculum. But instead of me talking about it, we've created a video of our students and our teachers that we'd like to show you.
So I am in my third month of teaching Number Corner. And while I understand that it is uncomfortable for some, it really is the best thing for our kids because it pushes them out of their comfort zone math-thinking wise. And they have to figure out ways to explain how they know what they know, which is truly the crucial part of math.
I think Number Corner helps kids like multiple ways to solve the secret.
I, I think, uh, uh, I think how that word gets kids like more interested, interested in it.
So I love the way that Number Corner encourages classroom discussions between students. It helps them make connections between concepts that they already know and ones that they're going to be learning in the future. What's your favorite thing about Number Corner? What's fun about it?
The Race to a Million game.
The Race to a Million game? You like the games that you get to play?
Yeah.
Okay, and the competition? Great, very good. Thanks for sharing. What do you like about Number Corner?
Um, I like how we get to talk about numbers, Race to a Million, and play this game about, you know, get to spin this num, this wheel with numbers on it. And then put a number, 10,000, 100, 10. And then we like, see if they're like equal, see if they're greater or less than. And then we see which ones are the lead. Right now, the boys are the lead. Yours is behind about 6,000.
Thanks for that big break. About Number Corner in Bridges in second grade is the use of engaging manipulatives that teachers, educators, and kids can use.
I'm Lori Gil, I teach second grade, and I have piloted the Bridges program this year and Number Corner. I love the student engagement that I see every day during the game time. I also love the open-ended activities that we're using in our classroom based on our students' lessons that we learned from it.
Um, why?
I'm Miss Cora, I'm in fourth grade.
I'm in second. And the thing that I like about those corners is try and get us questions next on each day.
Um, why? Because it makes my students think about the head, like we said, the patterns. If the math book is so rich amongst them. And the question as to why they're supporting your answer, trying to think what they think. I think it's wonderful.
Uh, the one that I'm curious is trying to guess.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I like that we have different patterns that we use on our calendar. And the kids love predicting what the pattern is going to be each day. Um, we do a drum roll and then we flip over to see if our prediction was correct. I also like the vocabulary cards because they make connections to them throughout the whole day, um, throughout different subjects.
I like the happy hoppers. And I like flipping cards over and I also like a happy hopper.
What do you do with the cards?
We flip them over and see what they are.
So hopefully come next year, we'll have another video of full implementation and share that with you as well.
Thanks, Kevin. It's always fun to see everybody sitting on the floors doing work. I don't remember ever sitting on the floor doing work in first or second grade. I just like that. I think it looks real. All right, onto the Treasurer's Report. I need a motion to approve the minutes from October 16th and 23rd of 2023 as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please. Ms. Widling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. Item B, financial approvals. The November, from the November 20th Treasurer's Report. I swear, it's like somebody revamped the agenda for me. It's different. Financial approvals. Okay. And that is B. Do we have a motion? Is that Ted? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please. Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, yes, motion carried. Motion to approve the financial items, then and now Mohican OTPT. We just did that one. I swear, it's like this thing, okay. Uh, donations. Treasurer recommends approval of the following donations. $1,000 from the Warren Brown Family Foundation for the Warren Brown Scholarship. $50 from Sarah Wingert for Harding High School FFA. $100 from League Women Voters for Candidates Night. $1,000 from Jim and Barb Greatham for the Harding High School Musical, costumes only. And $75 from Curiosity Anthony and Jessica Deramon for high school, Harding High School Robotics Department. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Ted and Tara? Discussion.
I do have a question. Do we ever like send these people like thank yous or whatever?
They get a thank you letter.
They get a thank you letter. Because I know the Grethams are always so supportive of our musicals. And I want them to know that we, so we send them something?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Call the roll, please. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. Item D, the five-year forecast. I need a motion, and then we'll have the discussion.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Hi. Most exciting media of the year. So I'm going to go over just a few slides about the forecast. I know a lot of this you've heard already, but we're going to go over it again. So, so our general fund revenue, we've got just under 20% comes from our taxes. We've got just about 78% that comes from the state and about 3% that comes from other places. So our total revenue this year in the general fund is going to be just shy of $59 million. Of that money from local taxes, last year there was a reappraisal in 2022, which was collected in 2023, which part of it was fiscal year '23 and part of it was fiscal year '24. So we had half of an increase at the end of '23 and half of it at the beginning of '24. In that revow, the values in the city of Marion increased by $69 million. And in our tax, in the taxes, when I talk about local taxes, it includes the taxes collected in Marion County, the taxes that are collected by the state on homestead enrollment. And it also includes the, um, the taxes that are collected by the state on homestead enroll back, and it also includes the, um, casino taxes that we get. And that's a total of just about eleven point five million dollars in taxes. Then we also obviously get our state funding. So in our state funding this year, this is the beginning of a two-year budget, um, from the state. So in the spring, we didn't know what the budget was, so the only thing in the budget then was the phase-in. But once the budget was finished, um, we now have the new funding formula phase-in, which is sixteen point six percent of, um, foundation and then fourteen percent of our DPIA. And that is assumed to continue through the forecast until it's all phased in. And then fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five on our state revenue is based on the new state budget. When we get into fiscal year twenty-six and beyond in the budget, the only thing in there is the phase-in because we don't really know what the state's gonna do at that point in time. So it's about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year of phase-in money. Um, that's included in there, but like, I think, well, at some point here, I'm gonna tell you, we really ended up getting more than two million dollars this year from the state increase. Um, then we have another line called other local funding, and that line, um, includes all the tuition we get for the excess cost of kids that are open enrolled into the district. Uh, we have interest in there, which, um, you know, with interest rates going up, we are getting quite a bit more, um, interest income. I think a few years ago, we had like forty thousand dollars this year. We're already over two hundred. Um, Medicaid is in here, and Medicaid is, uh, does bring quite a bit of, um, income into the district. It's a lengthy year-long process that Student Services, um, records the services that they're giving students. We get reimbursed by Medicaid. And then a year after, um, we're, Medicaid has finally caught up, and a year after a school year ends, we go through an audit and we get a true-up at the end of the year. So, uh, that true-up is about three hundred thousand, and we get about two hundred thousand dollars during the year. So Medicaid is about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And then there's some other things in there, um, preschool tuition, our donation, some rebates we get. Um, so our other funding is about one point seven million dollars. Um, so this chart shows just kind of a stacked chart of where our revenues come from. And again, most of our revenue you can see is in blue, and that's coming from the state. And that's where, you know, for our district standpoint, it's always important to keep an eye on and be aware of what the state's doing. Um, because changes at the state level would have a huge impact on us. So if they came in and said, "We're cutting your budget by ten percent," that would have a huge impact on us, much more than if we lost ten percent of tax revenue. So, um, again, in our district, the state revenue is the biggest share of our budget. Uh, then we're gonna talk about our expenses. So this year coming up, um, our salaries and benefits are just about eighty percent of our total budget. Um, we've got purchase services that are, uh, twelve point six percent. The supplies in the district are two. We have transfers out, which is just under four, and then all of our other expenses are, are one point five percent. Um, so this year's expenses are fifty-four million, just shy of fifty-four million eight hundred. And you can see the breakdown on there, and eighty percent is about what a district should be spending on salaries and benefits. So we're, we're, we're doing pretty good on, on that end. Um, of our expenses, in, in the salary and benefit numbers, uh, we negotiated the MEA agreement, um, and it is good through two thousand and twenty-five. So the, um, salaries reflected in the certified, um, are what we have, what we know through two thousand and twenty-five. Beyond that, what's in the forecast is just the steps associated with what we've negotiated. The O C agreement or the classified staff, um, their agreement goes through two thousand and twenty-six. So again, their salary increases are built in and then steps after that. Um, and so the salaries are reflected by the agreements. Um, on our benefit end, the biggest, uh, expense we have in benefits is health insurance. Um, last year, we did have an eight percent increase in our health insurance, and we had one premium holiday. So basically, we pay eleven months' worth of premiums. Um, so going forward in the forecast, each year is forecasted at an eight percent increase and one month premium holiday. So it's important to know on that, if we end up getting two, two months' worth of premium holiday, we're paying around seven hundred thousand dollars a month out of the general fund for medical insurance. So if we would end up getting a two-month premium holiday, that's a seven hundred thousand dollar swing to the good for our forecast. So, uh, Stark County prior to COVID was giving two premium holidays a mo- a year. At, once COVID hit and they had a lot of unexpected expenses, they went down to one. So over the course of the next five years, just one year of a premium holiday will affect the rest of the forecast, so.
You said it was eight percent this year?
Mm-hmm.
And what had been our experience with Stark?
Prior to that, it was right around four, so it almost doubled. And their average, when we joined the consortium, I believe was three point four percent with a two, two-month premium holiday.
So COVID had a big impact on that?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we get those premium increases in June for July. So, you know, next fall, you'll know what next year will bring, so. So the, the other big category we have are purchase services. So I have, um, given you the top seven purchase services that we spend money on. Uh, the, the highest expenditure we have is our ESPs, which are social workers, our speech and language services, and then some other educational services that we, we purchase out. We have, um, students that are out of district placement. Uh, that's gonna be about eight hundred thousand dollars this year. Um, I can say in that category, I know Olympia's looking at, um, creating some different, um, alternatives in there so we can maybe potentially reduce that going forward. Um, we have OT and PT bills just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, then we also have to pay for the students leaving the district on open enrollment. We have to pay other districts for the excess cost of any students that have special needs. That is upwards of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, we also have to set aside a certain percentage of our, so of the money that the state gives us for special ed, we have to set aside a certain amount of that. They actually take it back to pay for catastrophic costs throughout the district. Our share is about six hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Our electricity bill last year, or what was projected this year, is six hundred twenty-five thousand. We just found out on Friday that our electric rates are gonna be going up, so that number may increase a little bit. Um, it would be five months of bills. And then we also have students that are court-placed and foster-placed and residential placement out of the district. That's another five hundred thousand dollars. So our, the top seven, uh, you know, is, is quite substantial, but our services that we're gonna pay for this year are just shy of seven million. And then our supplies.
On that point, I found it interesting, our out-of, uh, district placements can range from forty thousand dollars to a, for a student,
to eighty thousand dollars per student, uh, for, because of their special needs.
Correct.
And so, and looking at, I know Olympia's looking at that opportunity because that's, over time, may not be sustainable, that perhaps we can do more as a district by bringing some of that in-house.
Yes.
Uh, because that eight hundred twenty-five thousand to a million dollars would pay for a lot of services in-house. Now, there's a lot that goes with that, and it'd have to be studied more, but I think that's valuable to look at that because of our out-of-district placements being so costly. And, and to the parents who have to.
And, and the out-of-district placement, we still have to transport those students. That doesn't, isn't included in that cost.
Yeah, that's not included in that number, right?
Okay. So our supplies, things that are included in our supplies are things like software, curriculum, our building's ground and maintenance supplies, our fuel for buses, and our technology supplies. And that is anticipated. There should be about one point two million. Um, so this is another chart that kind of stacks it up as to what our expenses are. And you can see salary and benefits again make up the majority of our expenses. Um, and if you also notice, from fiscal year twenty-one, our salaries and benefits go down. Our purchase services go down, and our supplies go down, and that is due, any decrease in there, not any, but some of that decrease is due to using ESER funds to pay for some of that. So you see twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three is low, and then twenty-five jumps back up. And I'm gonna talk about that in a minute, but, you know, we've known this since fiscal year twenty-two that our expenses were gonna come back in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, so what are, what are the ESER fund additions? So again, this is the end of ESER, at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. So the end of June, that money goes away. So in fiscal year twenty-five, we're gonna have an influx of money that we spent CARES Act on, CARE Act money on. And, um, we've gone through and identified some things that we know definitely are, we're not gonna continue doing, but there are things that are still being evaluated, and, and are we gonna bring all this back in or not? But at this point in time, this forecast reflects what, what we have out there that we think will go back into the general fund, or at least what we're spending this year. So we have about four million dollars in salaries and benefits. We've got just under a million in purchase services, and then we've got almost one point four million in supplies. So we have about, right now, a total of six point seven million that's gonna hit the general fund next year that isn't there this year. And of those things, this is a, a little summary, um, of what we have budgeted in twenty-four and then what's gonna go, what fiscal year twenty-four budget is what's budgeted in the CARES Act now. This, and fiscal year twenty-five is what goes back into the general fund. So, like, if I go down on the technology line, um, you know, we went to one-to-one, one-to-one Chromebooks for all the students since fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two that was up there. We started this, um, during COVID so our students could have technology at home, but then that also means that we have to replace that every year. Um, Technology Department does have a rotation. I wish I could tell you what it is. I think it's every kid going into ninth grade, maybe every kid going into fourth grade. I, I, I don't know what it is, but all those students will get a new Chromebook. But that number actually goes down, going back to the, from what we're spending this year to what we're gonna spend next year because they are still trying to replace some technology that isn't an ongoing thing, a big ongoing expense. And I know one of the things that they're trying to do this year is to buy new monitors for a bunch of the classrooms that, you know, aren't carried over into the next year. Curriculum supplies, you know, that number isn't as big, and that's because this year we're hoping to get, be able to purchase all of our math curriculum, and then we won't have to spend that the following year. So this is kind of like a, a short summary of, by category, what's going from, um, ESER into the general fund anticipated next year. And this equals the six point seven million I talked about. Um, so having gone past that, I wanted to look at this real quick because I know, you know, we kind of look at it and think, as, as we look at what our cash balance is gonna be, always that fifth year looks pretty tough along with the fourth year. So I, what I tried to do is show you that, um, if you look at fiscal year twenty-four, that's where fiscal year twenty-four ended in the last several forecasts. So it'd have been the fall of twenty-one, which would have been the twenty-two forecast, the spring of twenty-two. The fall of twenty-two would be the twenty-three forecast, then the fall and the spring. And now we're at the fall forecast. And, and what my point to this is, is as you, the more you know, the, the better your forecast gets. And it, always your falls, your spring usually ends up better than your fall. But you can see the grouping is much closer, but then after you get through a year, and you go to the next year, you know the state budget, you know your staffing. As long as you keep monitoring it, you're hopefully going to keep getting better. So like, last fall, we had said that in fiscal year twenty-seven, we were gonna be less than five million dollars. If you look at fall of twenty-three, we're now at just shy of fifteen million dollars, about eleven million dollars. So while we're still declining cash balance, it's a much better cash balance than what it was last year. If that is a fair statement. Um, so then what, why would our forecast change so much from year to year? Um, first off, you know, you have a two-year state budget, and in my budgets, I've never budgeted an increase unless I knew an increase was coming. So the only increase in our state budget, when we're at the end of a budget cycle, like, right now, is just that phase-in. I don't know what the state's gonna do, so I don't put in two or three million dollars because it may or may not happen. We have negotiated agreements, you know, we only have them for so long, and then after that, we don't know what that's gonna look like. Um, a big change in our forecast over the last several years is supplanting with ESER money. Um, your insurance increases and decreased changes, just like I said, I have eight percent in here, but if you only have a four percent, that all carries forward for, through every year, and your cash balance is gonna get better. Um, we have in additional or reduced student services needs. Uh, again, two years ago, we didn't have eight hundred thousand dollars worth of kids leaving the district for extra ser- services. You know, that's in there now, like, there are future things that you're not sure about. And then you also have, you know, your staffing changes and demographics, um, within the district. So right now, in a two-year budget cycle, I think fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, you know, you can be pretty confident in those numbers. Once you go beyond that, you don't have a state budget, you don't have negotiated agreements, those kind of things. It makes it harder to know, and then that's why, you know, your forecast is always changing. So this is just a summary then of our revenues, expenses, and our cash balances. And I have a graphic to go with this, like, these are the numbers. This is the, this is the graphic that goes with it, right? So, um, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, we've been building up. We've been, um, supplanting some of our ESER money. We, we did many other things with our ESER money. Um, but we were cognizant of, you know, not trying to add, add a bunch of programs that we couldn't sustain. And yes, there were programs added through ESER. Uh, but a lot of the salaries and benefits that were here were supplanting because we didn't want to suddenly get to year twenty-five and say, "Oops, you, now you don't have jobs because we don't have ESER anymore." So we tried to, tried to provide opportunities and, um, situations that definitely were sustainable or didn't overburden what was gonna happen in the future. We knew that this was all gonna happen in fiscal year twenty-five, and we have been, you know, we have literally been building our cash balance to be able to pay for things after this money was gone. And then this, this graphic, um, I always like to point out cash days because sometimes numbers are pretty big in our budget. Um, you know, we've always been, if you get below sixty days is when you need to be, you know, concerned. Um, and, but you kind of wanna be, like, your goal is always to try to be around eighty or ninety. You know, this year right now, it looks like we're gonna end the year at a hundred and sixty-five cash days. That's an extremely healthy cash balance. Um, and we do not get below sixty days until year, fiscal year twenty-eight. And this may be the first forecast that I've done here that year four, our year four and five weren't below sixty days in the forecast. Um, again, I think, you know, even at the end of next year, with the, with the move, removing things from ESER and not really knowing, you know, all the players and being confident that what I have built in the forecast right now, not all of that six point seven million is going to end up back in the general fund. But right now, I can only do the forecast on what I know and what's in front of me. Um, and I know that, you know, I'm not gonna be here to see the spring forecast, but I do know, you know, Olympia and the administrative team is fully aware of what's out there and what's looked at being put back in. And what can we do to do things, to, to give the kids as much as they have now and do it in the most effective and efficient way? So I know that they're always looking at, um, you know, do we, do we still need this program? Or do, you know, do, can we, can we do the staffing different? Can we do this or do that? Um, so I don't, like, I do feel confident that it's not gonna be six point seven million, but that's what I, that's what I do know today. So that's what's built into this. Um, and that's, that is, um, where I'm at on the forecast. Oh, you guys have questions?
Yeah, so can we go back to the cash days, please?
Yes.
And based on what you just said, that we don't know exactly what we're getting into four and five years.
Right.
From now. Uh, but also you have not seen years four and five below that magic number of sixty cash days.
I've never seen them above the sixty cash days before.
Oh, you've never seen them above? Gotcha. All right, thank you. I'm glad I asked that question. Well, that may be me.
I think you did say below.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I said that incorrectly. Thank you for picking that up.
No problem. And then, if you could go back, I, I just didn't see this in the, the handout that we got, in terms of the addition slide.
This one? Mm-hmm.
Yes. Can we have, does anybody else see that in theirs? Can we get that?
Yes, I do have. I, I added that today after I started thinking about it, but I will send you a new slide, slide deck.
I guess my last question for that is, do we?
Oh, wait, it's in your, it's in your, um, I'm sorry, it's in your, I don't know what color it is.
Okay, but it is in here somewhere.
Yeah, it might be the brown one or a tan one, uh, before, right there.
Got it.
Yes, there it is.
Yep. Okay. All right. Is there a more detailed list of?
Yes.
Okay.
I can get that to you also.
Perfect.
I, I didn't throw it in there because some of it may not make, you know, we're using educational words or whatever, whatever. It might, or might not make sense, but I can, I will send you what specifically makes up line by line of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because those are the questions that we are gonna need to, to answer in terms of what can we, what's sustainable and what is not moving forward without ESER funds. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, in the policy committee, we drilled down very hard on the ESER funds coming back in. That's a big number, six point seven, when you look at it. But, um, that's always been in your budget. Those people and those supplies and all that have always been in this budget going forward.
Yes.
So it's not like we're, have put on new people or. So, it's not like we're, have put on new people or new supplies or new equipment that has to come off. It's just a matter of, it's already in the budget. And so, I wouldn't want anyone to get concerned about jobs or anything like that. That's just because we use the ESER money to pay for their salaries. That's just a pocket you take it out of. It doesn't affect what we still need in the district from what we've always had. And we, and Olympia was a part of those meetings. And she was very clear about she's looking at every level of staffing to see what we need going forward. And that doesn't mean we're going to have any less staffing or anything of that nature. Just, it's a need-based analysis of, do you have too many classes of three students versus 22? All those things, and I think she's very, very cognizant of that. And the thing that struck me was, the good news is, in May last spring, we showed a cash balance in year '26 of $11 million. We're now forecasting a cash balance of $17 million, $6 million to better. And so, those are things you look at. And I want to comment that we talked about this in budget, or in the finance committees as well, that this is not a budget, this is a forecast. It's a tool to, for help this board, and I won't be here either with Veronica, looking at the future and what our needs are and keeping our eye on the ball that, to make sure programs are sustainable and all of that. So, I'm very well pleased with where we're at right now and how we have used the ESER funds wisely to build up our cash reserves that'll last us now for the next four or five years easily. So, I'm very, very happy about that. And Veronica and Olympia and the team have done a good job of keeping our eye on the ball that ESER was going to end in '25, so.
I think she's been telling us that since 2020.
She has.
I almost feel like the pandemic is almost over. For me, it is, but.
Anything else? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. There are no, hearing of the public questions?
No comments?
No, we didn't.
We go on to item seven. Do I have a motion for the agenda confirmation? Approval of agenda?
So moved, second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Old business, there is none. New business, line items. Item A, substitute employee. Superintendent recommends employment of Dr. Ratliff as a substitute teacher aide and media specialist. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Discussion, call the?
I thought we had hired him for something else.
We hired him as a substitute teacher. But he's also been subbing as a media specialist aide and a teacher aide. So, we had to hire him as a sub for those also. They're different pay rates, so we had to, going forward, they're, they're hiring all subs in all three categories, so we don't have to retrace that.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Abstain.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, approval of the '23, '24 superintendent goals. Superintendent recommends the approval of the '23, '24 superintendent goals for the purposes of annual evaluation. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, Marion Public Library Board of Trustees. Superintendent recommends the appointment, the reappointment of Dana Booker to Marion Public Library Board of Trustees for a term beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2030. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, Tri Rivers Joint Vocational School Board reappointment. The superintendent recommends the reappointment of Tara Dyer to the Tri Rivers Joint Vocational School Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Abstain.
Mrs. McKay?
I can pull more.
Yes, motion carried. All right, item E, overnight trip. Grant Middle School 8th grade to Washington, DC. The superintendent recommends an overnight trip for the Grant Middle School 8th grade to Washington, DC, May 21st through 24th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you for continuing to do this and give this opportunity for our kids. I know they love it, all of our kids have done it, it's fantastic. They might never be back, so it might be their only time to go to the nation's capitals. Appreciate all the work they put in for us.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item F, Marion City School Facilities Rental Guides Guidelines. Superintendent recommends the approval of the NCS facilities rental guidelines and fee structure. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Discussion?
Yeah, under page two, under A, it says, "The Office of Facilities in Operations shall clear each application." Then on C, it says, "Prior to final approval for any event by the superintendent or designate." Is the superintendent, are you going to review these, or is it going to be him only?
Right now, what we've been doing is just meeting as a team to kind of discuss them. And we've talked about including Sean Kearns in those meetings.
Okay, because I would be, for me, I would like the language to maybe mirror each other, superintendent or designate, because he can obviously be your designate at any point in time.
But I thought we talked about it, didn't we say Jake?
Well, I'm saying if it says superintendent or designate, she can make Jake be the person. So, then she has the power to designate whoever she wants to.
Instead of putting facility?
Yeah.
Superintendent designate.
And then, I think, you know, I, two other points, but in, on C, I guess I don't understand, I understand the whole harm, the hold harmless clause, meaning we're not responsible if you get injured or whatever happens in your event. I guess I don't understand the limit of a, if you're renting a room or having a one-time event to have a $1 million per occurrence life insurance policy. So, I don't know if that's feasible for a $30 fee to make groups go out and get a $1 million policy on every event that you have.
It's standard though, isn't it? $1 million?
Very standard.
But, I mean, I'm just, I don't think it's standard to rent a classroom and have to put up a $1 million insurance policy.
Yeah, I'm thinking, though, that you can get like a one-day kind of a thing. You can go to an insurance agency and you can get, I'm thinking it's not as difficult.
Yeah, I don't know that we necessarily need a coverage that high for some of these events, but that's the other thing. And then on three, I guess, I went back and forth on the issue for me personally on religious or church services. I have no problem with them using our things. I guess, to me, it comes down to, are they having an actual service or a congregation? Because they could then use our schools to kind of practice and wouldn't have to have a church or other event place, so to speak. But I don't, I don't know if this is written, if that was talked about or covered. That's the only other.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Because it has ineligible users. And, you know, if you're coming here and as an after thing, I know another school in Marion County had some individuals that were upset at times about their school, meaning River Valley, being used as sometimes all the religious things that they have by certain members of the public. I don't want to get into kind of that same place that potentially this group or that group is here in a religious capacity. I'm not talking about having events here, meaning you're going to have, you know, we're going to get together and have a dinner and stuff like that. I'm talking like actually practicing religion in the school. Yeah, a church, a full church service, not praying before meal, nothing like that. That's the only concern I have, the way this is in there, because we don't say yea or nay. We don't say, you know, it's good or bad. I mean, that's just the ones.
I think a lot of school districts allow church services in their buildings. I know Marysville, for example, which I have knowledge of, has a couple churches on.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
We have in fact.
And are you not, you're not suggesting to prevent that? Or you are suggesting that wouldn't have?
I went back and forth on whether to have the actual services, because as, and I think I brought this up in the committee meeting, because once you, you cross that, then you have to open it up to things that maybe a majority of the community wouldn't like. Certain, it could be, you know, a fundamental satanic organization that most people would not like to be here. So, I mean, there's a lot of opening up to that. And I'm talking, you know, I have no problem with them being here for events. Now, whether services, and I don't know if we limit the services, because in theory, if you follow this, you could have a service every week. And basically, you only have to pay roughly $120 or a couple hundred dollars.
Plus custodial if it, there you go. But I, I thought I also read in there, it's to your concern about something being unacceptable. There is language in there that covers all events. I think that the district as a whole can not allow a use that they determine to be unruly or irresponsible or something. And I think you're, I mean, I think we have, I think we have some, as I read the policy, I wasn't on the committee, so you guys.
Well, it talks about ineligible users, it's, isn't it? It talks about gun shows, for example, weapons, hate groups, whether or not they have certain limitations, group promoting plagiarism, or those that are pervasively vulgar or who promote imminent lawless actions. So, I think, like.
Yeah, it's under ineligible users on number three.
You think it would be, we could put it under that?
Well, I'm just asking how the board, I'm really bringing it to a point of clarification. I guess if it gets out of control, we can address it at a later date. I'm just, because the purpose of this through committee, and I think what we're about ready to approve, has a lot of fees, if you look at this, for, I mean, we want our community to use our schools and buildings that they gave us tax money to have after hours. I think that's made clear in the fees that we're charging. For civic groups and organizations, we welcome them into our doors. Then it gets into where you could have a group of individuals that are not a popular group, but you've got to have those same doors be open for them. And this is a much, it's a relaxed fee, for lack of a better word, words. So, they're very relaxed when you're saying, you know, you can have this community room that we're in today for a $30 fee plus a custodial. I mean, that's not, it's not a lot of money being spent there, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to exclude any religious group necessarily from the get-go. I think there's plenty of room within the policy that you guys have prepared that would take care of incidents that might occur on down the road. And so, for that, I would be in favor of allowing religious groups to rent our space. We'll just see how that goes.
Yeah, we're just going to have to monitor and see how it goes.
Well, like I designate, the superintendent, I think that was our comfort in having Sean Kearns as one of the designatees, right? Because he's pretty well-versed in the organizations that have been using a lot of our facilities in the past. So, just have to make sure we use that ineligible user clause, I would think. And many of those would fall under that.
Well, yeah, I mean, under, yeah, depending on the group. But I guess on group four, we do have some language that groups are not permitted to rent the district facilities, a platform for running a business. I didn't know if we wanted to add something, I mean, it's not under group four, it'd be under group three churches, but some language about, I mean, you can't have your whole, you know, church being ran out of our school. You know what I mean? Like, if you're coming here for an event, that's one thing, for a one-time or a two, two, a couple times a year.
Like a mission server, if they do that at River Valley?
Maybe not, a little too much. That's all I'm asking before we pass. I mean, that's something to think about. And I guess it hasn't really been an issue, but, you know, and we can address it later if it becomes one, I guess.
Well, I think our goal, remember, was to create a document that showed consistent policies instead of the inconsistencies that have existed. And I think this document addresses a lot of good work by a lot of good people. And we just put it out there and see, see where it goes.
But, you know, and to that, I don't know if it was inconsistent. I think we didn't, people were operating maybe with something that wasn't sensed. Though I don't know how inconsistent we were, but this is, that's why they wanted something, I guess, for lack of a better.
Page eight, just to get the information out, especially for our internal groups, for all the groups that would be labeled as group one or group two. I was hoping that we could perhaps reach out to them or their, the teachers that run those groups or their advisors to let them know, hey, here's where we are now. This is the, the policy going forth that will be enforced, so that they are aware ahead of time. So, it's not a surprise, oh, I didn't know I had to raise these fees or do this. But if groups one and two, which would just be the internal.
But I think one and two are nothing.
As long as they're.
It only, only if you're going to use, I believe, the kitchen, even on one and two is nothing.
Well, if it's revenue.
It's no fee.
If you generate revenue, it falls into a possible charge.
Yeah, and so, it would be possible. But even if they know, hey, there is no fee, that might encourage them to have more events too. So, if they just know, hey, we, I didn't know we could do this.
There's custodial and.
Just if it's going to encourage more activity.
Yeah, I think most of these, and they're going to fall in the group one, are going to be, you know, under staff anyway. So, once we get this approved, like, we tried to make it also not just look like an administrative guideline. So, we will put this on our website.
Even if it's on a staff update or something?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have a database of the people who've used our facilities or who are using them, so I don't think that would be difficult to do.
Gotcha, thank you.
Where is it housed? Where is this document housed?
Where is it housed right now? We just have it as a Google Doc, because we've all been working on it.
So, if I wanted to rent a spot here?
Yeah, we're going to put this on our website.
Where at?
Well, the, I think right now, well, I don't think it's yet on the website.
No, it's not.
Because it's just a draft.
Yeah.
But I think it starts, if people are wanting to, that are out there, it starts with building principals.
Why would you think that?
Because it says in the policy, you're to submit the form to the principal that then submits it to.
You can put it up?
It says.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it on the website, on rental page, on main page.
Page of.
It's towards the back, 12, 13, excuse me.
13 talks about how to submit it, procedures for use application on 13.
Because it used to be.
And it talks about the building.
Your office, didn't it?
My office has never done it. It's always been operations.
Operations.
I think it has, it says, "The building administrator will approve or deny based on availability." Then it goes higher to operations. I'm asking it to go to superintendent or designate, so then she can either deal with it or have someone else deal with it.
And the building principal is just simply, no, we have something else that's already scheduled, correct? Just the availability itself?
Yeah, but it's not always building principal, like, we can approve it, but it's not always the building, like, the soccer, the guys that play soccer. So, who would, where would that go?
In the end, it always goes to operations.
Yeah.
They do the final.
You know, the guys that play soccer over. You know, the guys that play soccer over.
Yeah, over Grant, yep.
We typically like them to at least talk to the principal, or we can talk to the principal, because we want to make sure it's not conflicting with anything that we're doing as a school district, because that takes priority.
So, who would that principal be? So, it would be Grant, not Harrison? Who would the?
Well, it depends on what school. If they want to use Grant.
I think she's talking the soccer field that's by the tennis courts.
Right.
Oh, the fields are, would just come straight to us, not the principals. I thought we're, yeah, like, classrooms or building space, we would double check with the principal, so there's no conflict.
We might on thirteen make a designation to that, because there, page thirteen says to go to the principal verse, to then to the.
Okay.
It's like the second bullet point.
Yep.
To say if it's in a building, go to the principal first, and if it's one of the fields, just go straight to administration.
Same with parking lots, correct? Similar idea.
Yeah, I mean.
Gotcha.
So, we've got that noted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. With that, and we have a motion second. Please call the roll. Mr. Dyer?
I made that motion out.
Yeah.
Long time ago. Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item G, technical corrections for Board of Education policies. Superintendent recommends the approval of technical corrections to the following Board of Education policies, and they are listed there. There are several, so.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. Onto items ten, under item ten, new business agreements. Superintendent recommends the approval of the following resolution to purchase a van through Meta Purchasing Cooperative, whereas Marion City Schools Board of Education, which is, wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of one nine-passenger Ford Transit Van. Therefore, be it resolved, Marion City School Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of one nine-passenger Ford Transit Van. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. Catapult Learning. Dollar amount is thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. It is budgeted Title I monies. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Catapult Learning for Title I services for St. Mary's through June thirtieth, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, in, in structure, elevate data quality. The amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and eight dollars and eighty cents. It is budgeted through ESSER funds. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and in structure for elevate data quality software. Do I have a, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Does it have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
This sounds great. And do we know how quickly, if approved, that we'll be able to implement this?
Um, we will set up onboarding with our team. I mean, our team has sat through demos with them. I actually had this program in Columbus and in Stanford, so when we did it, we pulled people, they do training with us, and we started out with a few rules, just to get started. I think I gave some examples of, you know, if there's a student who's absent three consecutive days, it will give us a team. If somebody, let's say we set a rule that says if a schedule gets changed, one of the things we really need to closely monitor is like our CTE courses. If a kid gets dropped out of that or added, we will get an alert on a daily basis. And we, as a district, have a district scorecard, and it'll help us, like, we're doing well with our data in Power School. And so will the building, so principals will have a scorecard, counselors have a scorecard, secretary. So, it will help us have a better handle on things that are happening in Power School. So, our team is extremely excited here to have it, and I, like I said, I've, I've seen it be valuable in the previous two districts that I was in. It's a little annoying at first, because you constantly get a daily thing, but our staff are not going to have to dig into Power School and find the ten kids who have hit three consecutive absences. They will see there's a ten on their district, on their data card. They'll hit the ten, and all ten students will come up. So, I think it will help us be more efficient. I think it will help our people be more diligent about what they're putting in and taking out of Power School. So, it, it can be, you know, again, we'll probably start with a few rules, and then we can add on additional rules.
What's the plan for that in terms of setting those parameters, so you're not inundated with a thousand different categories?
Um, well, that's part of the onboarding that we do with the team, and we can set up, Greg will probably be an integral part of this, and say, we're going to set these rules, and counselors are going to get used to these. We're going to set these rules for secretaries. And it'll be based on, you know, some of those errors that we see with our EMIS report, or just daily data entry things that we'll be able to fix a lot quicker.
Can it be building-specific, then? Is that the plan, or is it district-wide, or?
Um, we, I think we can do them building-specific.
Do building-specific, okay.
If, if there's a need, like, the high school's going to have different needs, but then we can set up our scorecards to monitor the whole district.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So, go ahead.
And I don't know that this, I'm sure it won't involve this program, but, you know, last year, we had about, what, fourteen of our high school students drop their CCP classes at MTC. Is there a way to pick up that data?
If we set the rule. Yeah.
Awesome.
So, so the way the, the company is set up is they have, I don't know, thousands of rules that they've built now across districts, so we can use some of the rules that they've already created, or we can create our own. And they do work with multiple systems. We had Power School in my previous district and Infinite Campus, so it can, it's the integration that we have to do with our system to get us started.
Would it work, though, if those students are going into their MTC accounts and dropping it? I mean, would you guys see that?
Um, we would have to have communication, because we have access to the schedules here, so we'll have to be in this schedule. But we're looking at even the way that they've been scheduled for CCP, so we can have a better handle on it.
Yeah.
So, my question, it looks like we're contracted for a year, so what, we use it for a year, see if we like it, and then we re-up, or?
So, yeah, so the, the essential, the essential bundle cost is just a one-time, so that they can integrate our systems, and then the yearly cost ends up being like ten thousand a year moving forward. So, we won't have to do the, the, the reason why the cost is more expensive right now is because we've got that year. So, our next bill will come, if we do this in December, we will get another bill next December for that, just that ten thousand reoccurring.
Great. Thank you. All right, call the roll, please. Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. D, welding, welding lab, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, through ESSER funds. Superintendent recommends approval of the lowest and best bid on Alveda Construction to remodel space at Harding into a welding lab for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
How many kids do we have in welding?
Um, right now, I think we have sixteen or seventeen that are in the first year.
Sixteen or seventeen?
Here, and I think we have nine students at Tri Rivers.
And this goes back, do we know what the expansion at Tri Rivers, they got, it just, I don't think was just for welding.
Yeah. Um, I did get a response from Chuck, I can share. He said with the, with the grant, they are going to be able to expand the number of students that they take into welding. They're also going to add more metal fabrication training, and they're going to expand their lab space. They currently take around forty juniors into their program each year, and they have a waitlet, they've had a waitlist for the past several years. And it'll be two and a half years when the building is completed, they will be able to take sixty juniors into welding, so an additional twenty people. It is competitive to get into Tri Rivers, and we are competing with multiple schools to get those spots. And when I talk to the team here, welding is one of those, you know, high-demand professions that our students will be able to get jobs immediately in. So, we feel strongly that this is something that we'd like to offer, because if our students want to do welding, and they don't get into Tri Rivers, they would still have the option to do that here. And since we have the opportunity to use the ESSER funds to make this, we, we don't see that we will have the opportunity to do that at another time.
Which Chuck also mentioned the expenses that are incurred as a result of having a great welding program, which I think, you know, our opportunity right now to actually do that lab for this amount of money is to our benefit. So, he had talked a lot about it's a great opportunity for us to pursue that here at Harding.
Yeah, and I think this is an opportunity for us to really truly build a true welding program, because I think with having it at Withrow, a lot of students did not want to leave Harding to go over to Withrow to participate in welding. And even this year, because we don't have everything moved over, those students are actually traveling over to Withrow like three times a week. So, these are really dedicated students into welding. So, I think that, you know, providing additional opportunities, adding in this exploration class that will have, you know, the younger kids be able to participate in, they don't really know the opportunity that's available to them. And for a lot of kids, as soon as they heard, oh, welding is over at Withrow, yeah, I don't want to be associated with that. So, we might have more students that would actually be willing to try welding if we try a few different strategies and be able to offer it here at Harding.
I think not only the welding, excuse me, but Tri Rivers is full in terms of its space and the number of students it can take. This, this expansion will help. But Tri Rivers is going to be looking for, sorry, the leaves get me this time of the year, they're going to be looking for satellite programs. And if we already have welding here, we can become, and some of our students get into Tri Rivers because we have a satellite program here. And the same thing with other programs, we spoke with Mrs. Swanger the other day about how she had at Tri Rivers a teacher's academy. Those are the kinds of things that, and Tri Rivers dropped their teacher's academy program. Well, we need teachers to, very much so in the future. So, I think when you look at not only welding, but I think there'll be opportunities for satellite programs if we have the facilities here to house those. And so, that would be another opportunity, not only to, to be a satellite location, but to train up-and-coming teachers for our district. So, anyway, that's, I'm getting off my soapbox.
One of the sessions I went to at Ohio School Boards was presented by Polaris Career Career Center, and they do satellites throughout that region of Cleveland. So, it, it's something that all of these career centers are looking at, because you, like, DACC, it's full, Tri Rivers is full. They're going to have to figure out, you know, how to serve these students that are really interested in these programs. And the only way they can do that really is to do these satellites. And so, it's, it's, I think, to our benefit that, and to our students' benefit, especially our students, that we get this created, because there are jobs in welding, good-paying jobs. And if we could add on CNC programming and things like that, our kids would get jobs, so.
Because the credentialing with welding is like off the chain.
Yep.
So, our students right now still go out to Withrow for welding. What we're voting on is for, to use ESSER funds for this renovation, so our students no longer have to travel there, they can stay here.
Correct. We would be moving all of that equipment over to Harding.
Where's it, where's the build going to be, radiator?
Yeah, it's in one of these rooms, because there's certain, I don't know, parameters we have to have, so.
And that's what the, this would be the build, do we know how much it's going to cost to maintain over here? Is it?
We already maintain the program.
Not much to maintain?
I would say that welding is a little bit more of an expensive program, just because you have the steel and the gases. But we also get additional funding for that, too.
For that program.
Yeah. That pays for that versus a radiator.
So, this would just be the build-out, not necessarily the maintaining of the program?
Yes.
All right, call the roll, please. Yeah. Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. All right, we do need to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22D1, the Appointment Employment Dismissal, Dismissed Promotion, et cetera, of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Call the roll. Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? Yes, motion carried. All right. We're going to go into executive session, and we will be back after that to finish up our meeting. Okay.
When I saw that, I was like, we need to get the.
My solution is we're not having electric.
Turn the heat off every certain time.
Hey, when you get into your strategic planning, talk about putting a windmill out here to supplement the.
Yeah.
The electricity.
A couple of them.
Or some solar panels, or something.
Mm-hmm. We've got the land.
I've got so many suggestions for solar.
All right, we're back, we are back. I need a motion.
Declare us out.
Declare us out of executive session at eight forty.
Motion?
Second.
Yeah, motion there.
Oh, I thought we were moving on to the next part already.
Yeah, it's like, wait, what?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got to make it official.
All right. So, item thirteen, consent agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, on to committee reports. Extracurricular, anything to report there? Rocky and Tara?
No, other than, I think the last time we had it, it was, we're starting the weather sports, but nothing really to report there.
Okay. Buildings and grounds?
Uh, we've covered on buildings and grounds, several issues. I think the one I had asked for, I guess that we're getting some, hopefully getting some handrails on the stadium.
Yay.
And potentially looking into, potentially getting a handicap accessible side to the home side. side to the home side of the stadium, and the baseball field on the hill will be getting built, starting after Thanksgiving. They're going to do some, uh, potential heating, uh, over there if they have to, if it gets too cold for the concrete, so they're going to be starting that project, uh, on the baseball field after Thanksgiving.
Great.
What else is, that's about most of the updates, and then he had talked about what we're doing tonight, which was the welding.
Okay. Uh, communications, Ted and I will meet, I think it's December second.
First.
First?
Yep.
Okay. Curriculum, Terrence Scott?
I'm wondering, Olympia, did we, um, solve the problem of curriculum, and, uh, two of the subcommittees are meeting on the same day?
Yes, it's fixed moving forward.
So where, can you tell me?
When the next one is?
Yeah, for...
The next one, sure, I'll pull it up.
November twenty-ninth, okay.
And then December twelfth, if one.
Because it says the twenty-eighth on our agenda.
And diversity and equity, um, let's see, we met, we had a meeting with Johnny and Olympia, um, last week or the week before, I'm losing track of my days. Um, we're going to start some ERGs, Employee Resource Groups, um, that will, I, we think, help with our culture, um, and promote, um, some of the tenants of diversity and equity. Um, I can't remember which ones they were, do you remember, Olympia?
The work groups?
Yeah.
Um, we talked about a veteran, uh, work group, we talked about doing an MCS alumni group, um, for people that are employees, that are alumni as well, and trying to do something around there, um, can't remember the rest off the top of my head.
I can't either. Uh, finance, just heard the finance report, and I think they're working through a lot of the things on policy. Uh, Ted, anything legislative?
Please, no.
No.
There's all kinds of stuff going on.
Too much, but...
Try not to think about it too much, because it doesn't matter what we say or do, they're just going to keep plugging away at us. Student achievement, Tara?
Um, not necessarily student, well, um, yeah, student achievement, um, kudos to, um, our students who were at OSBA and, um, were at the student fair, who presented, um, I think they did an amazing job, and, um, for us to, um, have kids participating, that really made me feel proud to go into that great big arena and see our kids, uh, there, and they were nervous and everything, but I think they did a, a great job. Also, kudos to...
And they looked really good.
They did, they had these little shark jackets on and stuff, so they were really, they were really, really good, and they were from freshman to senior, so it was a diverse, uh, academic group. And also Olympia and Jen Sheridan, and look at you guys presenting at OSBA and doing a really good job, so, um, if anybody would like, um, your presentation, can you email that out? Because it had a lot of good stuff, so kudos to you and your team, Jen, and, um, you guys did a really, really nice job of, of representing Marion City Schools.
Thank you.
So good job.
We had a lot of good questions from the audience.
Were you the plant?
I didn't ask any questions, I didn't ask any questions.
But I think Olympia, um, OSBA is a nice forum, I know we're sad about what happened, but anytime we could showcase our staff or our students, or, you know, what we're doing here in our district, that'd be great, so if we ever have those opportunities, let's hop on those, and, um, I noticed that there were, uh, musical groups there and all kinds of good things, so, um, get us out there if you can. I know you will, because you know everybody.
All right, um, we'll dip down to item sixteen. Uh, the next board meeting is scheduled for six P M. on December eighteenth, uh, and then we'll come down to, uh, first readings of board policies, um, they're listed below. Uh, I don't know if anybody's had time to look through that, um, but this is just the first reading.
Okay.
All right, um, item B is the, just a discussion about renaming the community room, um, to the Mary Ellen Withrow Community Room. Uh, I think we talked a, a little bit about it, uh, last meeting, um, but next agenda, we would have a motion to approve that. Is there any further discussion about that?
Well, I think it'd be nice if you kind of wrote something up, I know we, um, have named different things after her, and, uh, we definitely am proud of, of the things that we, um, know that she's accomplished, but if we can, you know, like, write something up so that we can actually put it in, you know, our, our minutes, um, that would be great.
Could we let the, the kids do it? Could we have a class, could we have an English class or something, do a write-up?
History class.
History class, or, yeah, whatever.
I like that idea.
Yep.
Yeah, get some research, so they take some ownership, and, like, from this year's senior class, or whatever the case might be.
Then they can come in and, yeah, I like, one of the things that we talked about at OSBA was the value of student voice, and, um, student voice, uh, in that particular vein would be amazing, so...
The, um, the, one other piece of that would be something to do with the picture that's kind of been, whoever put the little name tag right on the portrait, I don't know if that can be restored, or if there's another portrait of her, I mean, it's a lovely portrait, and then somebody put a name tag right on it, um, that might be something.
So do you want this to be called, uh, the Mary Ellen Withrow Community Room at Harding High School?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so those would be the things that, I don't know if we need to get an estimate on, like, facing that, or if there's another portrait of her somewhere that we could, um, make a new one, but this really bothers me, that nameplate.
That doesn't count.
Could have put it right above her picture, or right below it, which is where those things belong.
Do you think that's the portrait she uses now?
I think this is her official one, when, when she was U S trainer.
She could provide us this.
We can go to the museum and see, ask her.
Yeah, because I mean, if it's hers, she probably has one that we can blow up, we can break.
Okay. All righty. Okay, item eighteen is final readings and approval of the board policies listed below. Superintendent recommends the final reading approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. I don't believe there's another reason to go into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Um, Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay? No, wait, he's second, I'm sorry, I'll switch that up. Mr. Wibling, Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Have a safe trip home, everyone, appreciate you coming in.
Happy Thanksgiving!
Happy Thanksgiving, that's true.